Okay, 7 o'clock. We will call this September 12th, 2017 meeting of the Port Edwards Village Board to order. And I would ask the clerk to call one, please.
Trustee Bingham.
Present.
Trustee Duncan. Trustee Brendan.
Here.
Trustee Martinson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
And trustee Saylor.
Here.
And let me just reflect that trustee Duncan has an excused absence. I would now ask you to rise, face the flag, and then pause for a brief time and honor those that paid the ultimate sacrifice so we may exercise this freedom this evening. I, the President of the United States of America, and as the Republic of the Village of Kansas, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting.
Go move.
Trustee Bingham made the motion and will have a second, seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any trustee wishing to speak? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That carries unanimously. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14th, 2017 special board meeting.
Go move.
Motion by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Martinson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carries unanimously. And the final motion on minutes to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2017 special board meeting.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Brendan, seconded by trustee Martinson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote? That motion carries unanimously. And let me see here. Public comments on agenda items. I see no one wishes to speak on that. Brett, we will address you shortly here. Without objection, I would like to have Brett speak to us on the YMCA under the President's report instead of making him wait until the end of the agenda. His presentation is about 10 minutes. Hearing no objections, Brett, your honor.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. As you, some of you know or not know, I'm CEO of the Johnny Young Foundation, Southwood County YMCA. And as you're all aware, that we've been in the midst of a capital project for the last four years. And then August 28th or 29th, we had our press release announcing our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Wisconsin Rapids, and the development of a new joint capital project. And so we're very excited with that piece. But as you would imagine, one of the questions is, what does that mean for our current facilities? And that's part of what I wanted to help bring some light to, seeing that we've been in this community, which will be next year, 60 years with that. So the announcement that was made a few weeks ago is that we do have an accepted offer, but not a final offer, for the purchase of the Rapids Mall for that joint development projects with us and the Boys and Girls Club. Assuming if that would go through on November 30th timeline, our plans would continue to move forward with the, receive the necessary funding we needed to have to make the project go and start construction sometime next year, 2018, most likely spring. Our plans do include retaining our physical presence in the Village Board at Edwards at our current location. That is being done for a number of reasons. One is our Board of Directors a long time ago made that decision that all of the planned spaces in the new developments, or the spaces that we are planning in the new development, would not be achieved. There are a summer number of programs that we would like to retain here in our current physical plants, plant in Port Edwards here. And those redevelopment include items such as our Wellness Center, which we're converting and making live for 24-hour access here. We have a great partnership with the School District of Port Edwards around 4K education, so we intend to continue that program here and continue childcare onsite here with some wraparound pieces. And then we have a very, very vibrant gymnastics program, gymnastics team program, which we'd also be looking to retain here onsite. Our plans also include not only to address the current space needs for those in here in Port Edwards, but also open up additional spaces for community venues, meeting spaces, other classrooms available. There would be some spaces, as you would imagine, that would be longer and longer used, maybe like the pools and some of the locker rooms and some of the lower level spaces. But again, our plans do look for us to maintain our presence here with that. And to share with you, we've made a significant amount of investments in this facility over those years, and we continue to make investments in it. Actually, we've actually this summer invested up $60,000 in towards those future use programs in the facilities here this about two weeks ago. So we're committed to the community. Our board's been committed to the community. And just wanted to make sure that we had shared what our plans are, a little bit about what this is and what this isn't with this. There's more information that will be coming forward. We anticipate, you know, having some opportunities for some community input on this one. But I would kind of leave it open for any questions that you may have at this time.
So the indoor pool will close?
Yes, eventually, yeah.
What happens to the Y and Rapids?
Most likely the YMCA in Rapids would be sold is one option, or it could be repurposed or partnered with another agency on that. But most likely, if we're repositioning the majority of our programs in the Wisconsin Rapids area, there wouldn't be a need for that additional facility.
Mr. Bingham.
In the minutes of the Financial Conservative Committee Report, Rippel Kovak, Kovak.
Kovak.
States that the YMCA building in the village would be repurposed. What did he mean by repurpose?
Essentially what we, what I just kind of described there, so, you know.
Something completely isolated from the different of the Y. I mean, no way turned into a business complex.
Nope, not at all, nope. We anticipate that actually our plans call for the full facility to stay intact. There are just certain program areas within it that we would close off with that. We feel that it allows us over time to see how the community reacts and grows and how we might be able to reclaim and repurpose those spaces to meet the needs not only of Port Edwards, but also our region in terms of Nukusa and some other municipalities, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'm kind of curious with the new gym that was built back a few years ago. Do you have any plans for that?
Right now, that gymnasium houses our gymnastics program. Our tentative plans call for us moving that space into the main facility and repurposing the gymnasium in there for a real true gymnastics center. And then as a result, we can reuse this space for sports program, not only for the Y, but also open it up for community venues as another option for rentals and other pieces. So it allows us some greater flexibility. Did you have a question?
You answered it, thank you.
Okay, great.
What about the racquetball courts?
Racquetball courts, those would be not open.
The youth basketball program that right now is utilizing the YMCA, would that move to Wisconsin Rapids then?
Actually, what this does is that gymnasium spaces at a premium during basketball time throughout the region, when you look at all the schools. Our program would look to go into the new facility, but with us being able to reuse the youth center right behind us, we'd still be able to use that for basketball and basketball league programs.
Kind of hate to see those youth programs not be at all available for kids, you know. I don't know how many families, I mean, I'm sure there would, but to move that program up to your, the new YMCA up in the Rapids Mall, I really hope that we could keep them here.
Yeah, Aaron, if you look at the programs outside of the Wellness Center, all of those programs are youth-serving programs. And with some of the other options that we're contemplating inside that, inside the Port Edwards, we think that there's opportunities for doing some what we consider youth-serving here, trying a new programming or innovation program, program innovation around youth programs. So it gives us some flexibility.
You mentioned rooms in the main building after you do your revamp or whatever. Would that mean like possible venue for Village Board meetings in the future?
Certainly. Yeah, a few parts of those meeting spaces that we'd be able to reclaim or repurpose, Marshall, as we say, within the design. So, you know, as we, as we look to go along here, you know, this is the timeline for construction of a new project up there in Wisconsin Rapids is going to be about 14, 18 months. So, you know, we're a couple of years out from seeing that. But in the meantime, you know, we're making some steps today towards the future use of the existing facility and continue to invest in that.
Any other questions? I'm just glad, I told Brett before when he asked to come to speak, it was a couple of weeks ago, I said, well, you know, don't forget that you have to stay in town because Mr. Edwards is standing across the street. He can see you come down off there.
Yeah, well, and I appreciate that. I mean, that is, that was one of the other main reasons for our Board of Directors, which represents the community, you know. You know, we have a legacy here. We have a history here. We've been very fortunate for the number of people we've been able to serve, and we want to build upon that legacy. And so what we hope that people would take away from this is that this isn't about Wisconsin Rapids, this isn't about Nukusa, Port Edwards, or any of the municipalities. This is about how we continue to serve the community for the next 60 to 160 years and best service the region. Because we are, we're all one neighborhood. We're all one family here. And this, this makes it convenient, but we also acknowledge the fact that we need this facility to help fulfill all the programs that we want to accomplish in this future design.
Okay, Brett, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Very informative. And I encourage any of the citizens or ward members, if you have any further questions, to reach out to Brett and he will help you.
Very much so, very happy. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming here. Okay, moving on, we will go into the committee reports. Chairman Bingham, committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to cover the committee in detail, but I'm going to highlight a couple of things and then bring the motions to the table and then respond to something somewhat related to Brett's, not directly, but somewhat related to his presentation. First of all, I'd say two residents came to the Streets Committee. One was concerned about a flushing hydrant in their front, in the public or in the, in our right of way. And we pressed a move on that after discussing that with Mr. Lizer.
Mr. Stewart.
And Mr. Stewart, and reviewing what the DNR would require of us, he had decided not to make that move, that flushing hydrant. I made an attempt to contact Mr. Detlestein, he has not returned my call. So I feel due diligence has occurred, we did some investigation, I requested some information and staff responded. So that is my stay as if, and, you know, Mr. Detlestein unfortunately did not get back to me. I feel the ball is in his court. Secondly, we had a discussion, a resident from the Nepole Lake Road, a resident, Mr. Adam Altman, concerns about the quality of that road. That's been on discussion off and on for about a year, to my knowledge, since I've been on the board. And there was some response from the people in attendance in regard to the structure or the condition of that road. I think Mr. Altman, you know, he presented a lot of information. Subsequent to that, Mr. Stewart and our president, Mr. Stewart, who went out and there were some residents out there, at my request, and I didn't tell the president, but he went along for the ride. And had a very good discussion with them about equal, but I, you know, we reached out to them. I think there was, and correct me if I'm wrong, either one of you gentlemen, that we'll review that as a future project, you know, in a five-year plan. But right now, we were, I think we're able to do some things to make them a little more, you know, receptive to what we're trying to do. It's a very expensive project. It's probably $600,000 to $700,000 if I'm in the ballpark. So we, you know, we have to plan accordingly for that, but they definitely are resident support Edwards, and we will respond to that. So I did want to respond to those two resident things. We had a number of discussion items related to projects, and I'm just going to say that from what the minutes indicated, there's a lot of things that are on track or will be reviewed, we're awaiting information. And I feel that, I feel confident that our next meeting will tie up a lot of loose ends there with Dell, and I will bring some information on that. So I feel really good about where we're going to go with that. Let's see. Okay, I think I'll move into some motions, and then I'll finish up quickly with a couple comments for myself. There was a faulty water meter at 221, thank you, at 221 Island Avenue that was detected to be faulty. Part of that bill was $956.75. The committee recommended that we waive that particular bill based on the faulty meter. I think there was another part of that bill, Mr. Lizer, that we did collect, if I remember correctly. Thank you. And so there was some give and take. There was a tenant in there, a landlord, we had some difficulty getting in there to assess what was the problem, but we feel kind of this is the best place we can be. So we're going to, there's a motion. I'd like to introduce a motion to waive $956.75 due to a faulty meter within aggregate readings at 221 Island Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Saylor. Credit the address at 221 Island Avenue and the amount of $956.75 due to a faulty meter in inaccurate readings. Is there any discussion? Chief Lizer.
That's all I know. We have the beacon software now installed, and it's working wonderfully. So every morning I go on my phone, tremendous, and have many in pictures.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And how long was that making?
Thank you, Chief Lizer.
I'm glad that the company finally got it right.
That's a tool, it's a nice tool to have, and I'm glad to have had our results allowed. So that's very good. Did I pass that?
No. Is there any further discussion among the trustees? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, there was a discussion in regard to the sewer rate. We have not had an increase going on three years of the sewer rate, which is the most expensive water of the two. There was a recommendation to the committee that we approve a sewer rate increase up to, that's important, not to, but up to 10%. Diane has given me some good information, a 5% increase would typically be $7.20 on your bill. A 10% increase would be $14.25 on your quarterly bill. So with that information, we're, I'm recommending that, the committee is recommending that we approve a sewer rate increase up to 10% to cover expenses.
That is a motion.
So move.
Is there a second to chairman Bingham's motion?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Saylor. Is there any discussion among trustees?
So the, is there any issues? I want to say that we've talked about this, this part of budget and stuff from the past couple of years. There's some, some bush you gotta jump through, or you only can raise it so much.
That's just the water.
That's just the water and that sewer. Okay, sorry. I didn't know what to do. Thank you. I just want to say, yes, we're going to approve up to 10%, and legally only can do it.
Right, no, that's excellent question. I, yeah. So they want to do it on the.
On the line.
On the what?
I guess it's a gotta-go question. I'm not sure.
Got that all.
Okay, any further discussion?
I move that we, did I say that already?
I'm super ready to, to make the motion and to second.
In fact, all in favor, why, it's your call.
Is there any further discussion?
Up to 10% or 15%?
Or motion?
I'm saying up to 10%. I don't think.
Now, that's just once we sit down and start doing the budget. That up to 10% is, because there's a deficit in the wastewater.
Yes.
And that was to try to balance that, a portion of it.
Right.
So if it is only 2%, then it's 2% of it.
Right, right. I agree with what Eric said. So, he gives us a latitude to 10% as well. I don't want to break the tension.
No, I don't either.
But we need to look at the budget and that particular line item. But that's a good point too, Eric.
Really troubles over the last few years, that program has gotten somewhat out of line, and, you know, the deficit just keeps going up. So we can't take care of it all in one year, but I like the motion that, you know.
Well, if I remember correctly, and Diane, and correct me if I'm wrong, but like in four or five years, we're going to come back, we're going to have that loan paid off, and we're going to be at a spot where we don't have to be perhaps looking at this.
Yeah, I have a six years.
Six years.
That'll be paid off, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And that's kind of why we're doing it. We've been, kept it the same for going on three years, and I don't think, I think it's within the realm of, you know, $7 or $14 out of 10%. Even if, you know, in between it'd be about nine or 10 quarter. And that depends on usage, you know. So just go to the Y, user restroom.
Okay, so there's no further discussion, and I will repeat a motion that we are going to increase up to, which means the cap will be 10% if needed. It will look more at that at budget time. So all those in favor of the motion to approve a sewer rate increase up to 10%, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
And again, thank you, Eric, for your input on that. Clarifies all the points. Just want to make a couple of comments. It says water park on the agenda, but I would have related, I'm going to put it all together. We had a discussion item briefly in the Streets Committee, and since I've done some legwork and had some discussions on my own, and, so I'd like to just recap where I, I'm going to make a recommendation to the board tonight, and I'm going to, first, before I do that, I'm going to highlight some points. First of all, the board has accepted $500,000. That is done. We have that. Diane's got her, got it in her line item at some place. So we have that, that's a given. All right. I do want to say that on that particular night that we approved that, I said, we're not putting the shovel in the ground or turning a piece of soil until we're comfortable going forward. And I stand by that particular statement. In light of that statement, I've had discussion with a legacy board member, I've had discussion with Mayor Zach Burway, I've had other discussions. The legacy board member said unofficially, he was comfortable with us delaying spending that money. Okay? I think that's critical. Now, the board did approve that, but this particular board member indicated some comfort with that, felt that Legacy would be comfortable with that. Okay, I'm glad to hear that, because I did, I've had discussions with Mayor Zach Burway in regard to their splash pad, in regard to the aquatic center being built in Wisconsin Rapids, in regard to their offer to include municipalities in that aquatic center at a resident rate. There would be a participation financially on our part, but that is a discussion basically over lunch that we had. So I'm just laying it all out for you. And with recent developments, with the future of the Y, I think that's huge. I commend it. I think it's fantastic that it's happening. Not that Y is being port, but that complex is going to be beautiful and built. And I'd be willing to say, don't shoot me, if you did a, if you did a resident membership survey, which you probably have, I'd say 90% of your, your members are not from Port Edwards.
Our current demographics are 8 to 10% are Port Edwards residents.
Okay. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm just saying moving it is not the end of the world. Well, that's why I support it regionally. And Mr. Stewart, who brought up basketball leagues, my kids played, my kids played in that league forever, and they were from Grand Rapids. So, you know, it's going to be give and take regionally, Brett, and I support what you're doing. I really do. And I think it's high tuned with what we're talking about. I have soil testing concerns over at Ripple Creek. MSA wants $67,000 of that $500,000 to tell us if it's a doable place, a doable site. I don't want to spend $67,000, then we're on the hook for the rest. We have no choice then. We're locked in. So I would hope, I can't believe we can't do soil testing done on our own for a couple of grand, that's just my thought. So I am concerned about the Ripple Creek location, as I stated, when we accepted the $500,000, you know, Marshall's mentioned this site, that might be a better site, I don't know. I don't pretend to have all the answers. But I think what is best, what is best, and I do lay a weight figure on this, what is best fiscally for the residents of Port Edwards and recreationally for the residents of Port Edwards? Zach told me they've already spent $800,000 on their splash pad. Gee, they only got $500. You want to spend $300,000 initially on splash pad. I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to go to the maybe limits that they did. They're going to spend more. He indicated subtly that 800 isn't even the end of it. So I'm concerned fiscally, when we get to budget time, what are we going to have? What does it mean to the residents on the taxes? I'm very conservative fiscally. I'm liberal socially, just to let you know. And I'm like recreationally, what's best for this community? And at that, I'm not sure what that means. I'm not sure what that means to the residents of Port Edwards. So in light of all of that, what I've just said, we know something for sure, we have $500,000. You know, and I need to get into water concerns and things like that. Plus, I've had, I'm going to have some discussions with MSA, which is the development contractor. I think they're catching on that we're going to go slow like this. And I don't have a problem with that. I am a board member. We got it. With all due respect to the previous board, I'm not suggesting that they did something inappropriate, but we got it instead of approving. Well, that's a lot of money to approve, and I'm still not comfortable with what's best for the residents. So I recommend to the board be delaying the signing of the MSA contract, and at this time not paying anything out of that contract. That would be a motion that I would give.
You correct me if I'm misstraps, I think, if we're not taking any motion, we really don't need a motion. Is that true?
Yeah, no actions being taken. The board doesn't need to actually entertain a motion.
Oh, okay.
On the top, and probably would be, would be better not to, in any case, given the contents of the board agenda.
So we just don't do any?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to let you know where I'm coming from. I'm only the chair of the Streets Committee, I'm one member of seven. I don't even know what the other people on this board feel strongly about, or feel about it. I've had a few, you know, Eric's given me a little feedback, Dana in our committee's given me a little feedback, and Joel, but beyond that, it's just been conversation. Eric?
So where is that money currently sitting right now? Is that in my check? In our? Are we gaining interest on that money? So what happens if this project doesn't go through, or whatever? We don't keep that interest, do we? I mean, it's free money, or do we have to pay that money back to Legacy on the interest that they lost?
I would deter that question to our attorney, but my understanding is, and the sense I got, and I don't want to speak for Legacy, because I spoke to one member, so, but it wasn't like, if you give it back, we'll put it someplace else. Now, what does that mean?
The contract's not clear on that particular issue, so it's, I mean, certainly it doesn't appear intended that the village is intended to benefit from holding the money.
Kind of sense would say, excuse me, Mr. Ashlet, they get the money, what the interest is going to go back to?
Yeah, and I, and I would think that would be common sense, yeah.
And just to be clear, there are no negative consequences built into the contract to the village for not spending the money. the village for not spending the money. Presumably Legacy would take it back, and there aren't any liquidated damages or anything like that that would be required.
But if we were to give it back, then would we be less inclined to be offered a grant in the future?
That's not a legal question.
The board, the Legacy Board won't even answer that. They, they, they're not going to show their hand on that. You, we can speculate on that. You know, I have, have had the same thought. It's hard to talk about not to accept the money. To be honest with you, I'd like to accept it and have some latitude.
So can we ask the questions to Nekusa since they're going forward with it and find out their final cost on their, is there comparable to us?
I don't want to be.
It was a discussion to have in the future.
Yeah.
I think that's a discussion for a little later on, you know, after they're up and running, you know, into sea. All I know is I went up to Bee Field a couple of weeks ago, and I sat there a while and watched the splash pad. And my first, my first look at it was, they're in $600,000, and I mean, it's small. I mean, it is really small, and there were hardly any kids there. Of course, it wasn't like today it was, you know. But I think we're, it's not going to hurt anything, and I think it's our benefit at this time to take it slow.
I'd like to see what Nekusa do. I really would. I think I'm very interested in their direction and plans. I mean, in terms of, you know, maybe they've got a better idea, and I'm willing, I hope the board is willing to listen to that. I just want to be very, very cautious about incurring additional costs. You know, if I knew $500,000 covered it, and, you know, that was it, but I haven't heard that. I haven't heard that. The gentleman had a question. Oh, go ahead.
We're not going to go off table, I'm sorry.
Oh, we can. Talk to me after the decision, Chairman.
I'm not certain if you had, when you had your conversation with Wisconsin Rapids, if we can find out what the operating costs are per year. I know that they're early, they probably haven't even gotten to that.
Well, they have some projected costs.
I do think that's important to know what our expenses are going to be.
Right. And they're with me.
On an annual basis.
Right. No, and that's an excellent question. They have projected, and they're, and Zach has said their projections. You know, it depends how everything comes in. They are approaching every community in the area, village, town, to partner in this. Just so that's, it's not just Port Edwards because we're talking splash pad. And I could say, I just want to keep the door open, is my intent, or hope. We got, they have the money. So, and there's no penalty if we give it back. I think those are two good things. And I'm, you know, our attorney's looked at the contract, feels comfortable with where we're at in terms of, and we're not, I don't want to spend money on that contract until we're sure we want to go ahead.
Okay, I think we're starting to repeat ourselves here. We're 50 minutes in. No, no, that's good, into this discussion. Without objection, I will allow Mr. Jesse to address the board with his statement.
Well, I was just going to ask, I must have had a misunderstanding on that $500,000. I thought that was going to be awarded if you did decide to put in a splash pad. How, I'm surprised to hear that the village has that $500,000 in hand.
We had, we had, we had to vote to accept the gift.
So you're obviously saying you are going to build this splash pad, or no?
No.
That's what I'm.
We're moving slow at this point. One of three options, the original at Ripple Creek, possible location next to the Y, you know what I mean? Then you're talking about maybe partnering with the Y in some regard. And then, as Chairman Bingham said, the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there might be some stipulations if we can even donate $500,000 to join the aquatic center.
Oh, I see.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. You summarized that beautifully. I request a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell to approve the minutes of the cert committee. All those in favor, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Planning, property, information, and technology. Chairman Martin, before you begin, I would like a little extra time, maybe a couple of extra minutes, because there's two representatives of fire department on the east side. I can remember seven under the information item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our meeting on the August 22nd, and we had, I'm not going to go through each of the line items, but we did talk about and review our website, current status on our website, and we're going to be making some changes in that area. And discussion on permitting for work done in the village property. We're also talking about some permits and so on and so forth. And then sub-date for east side fire station ad hoc committee. We do have a new fire chief who will be joining us. And I guess we need to talk about the ad hoc. The ad hoc committee is actually formed so that we can talk about the east side development and how we're going to proceed, which we do have a timeline that we have to meet in order to meet the expectations that we had already agreed to some time ago in the development project. At this time, we have done nothing. I believe there is some money that has been allocated, and we would possibly be able to use that money and put toward a building that would be quite probably not substantial enough really to, to house our equipment at this time. So the meetings that we're going to have to move forward to with are going to have to involve our thoughts and discussion on how we want to proceed with this.
In Trustee Saylor, at that meeting, you mentioned, oh, a truck. It's kind of like we had a new chief, and then our new truck comes in.
Twenty. Twenty. They're, they're putting that committee together. We're working on getting a new truck and figuring what they want. So then.
So once that truck comes, then the other truck can't leave until that comes.
Then the old truck will.
Okay. Anything else, ma'am?
I've read that. Anybody have the other information? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Trustee Markson for the minutes of the committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Chairman Mitchell, public safety.
Yes, Mr. President. I have minutes from the August 1st meeting. They were laid in coming to the board, so I'm presenting them now, and we'll ask for a motion momentarily. Most of it's old news by now. The fire chief nominees have been selected. We now have a new chief to be. We also discussed the employee physical form, which is very, very outdated. And the FHR committee, the Human Resources and Finance Committee, will be taking that on also. We reconfirmed, well, we recommended to the FHR committee to hire a full-time officer that, that will change in the next minutes that I report. We talked about accessibility of the chief to the public. We also talked about priorities for the police department and access of the police department to the website, which is also discussed. Ordering a new car, there wouldn't be money available yet to do that, so that will not be happening. That pretty well summarizes the August 1st minutes, so I would move that we accept the August 1st minutes as printed.
Chairman Mitchell made a motion to approve the August 1st 2017 public safety minutes. Do we have a second? Second by Trustee Bingham. Discussion? All those in favor, signify by a saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, September 5th minutes. Under the fire department, we made a motion to accept their chief's recommendation for a new fire chief. I'll get to that in a minute. Other things, the furnace was repaired in the police department. We had clarification of preferences that deal with junk on people's private property, including vehicles which are registered or unregistered. We also had a discussion concerning police matters, concerning board members, and we talked about scheduling for the police department because the number of officers available and part-time officers available is changing, has changed. That pretty well summarizes our September 5th meeting, so I would move that we accept. Let me check. Yes, we're going to accept this first. We will accept the minutes for, I move that we accept the minutes for the September.
Motion by Chairman Mitchell to approve the September 5th 2017 public safety minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon. Discussion? Here you are, across the discuss. All those in favor, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I now move to accept Chief Lizer's recommendation of Patrick Arnt, as our new fire chief.
Is there a second? Second by Trustee Saylor to, the hitter here, to accept Chief Lizer's recommendation of Patrick Arnt as our new fire chief. Is there any discussion? If I may, just a bit of chief, I, I think it's, should it say Chief Lizer's recommendation or should it say?
That's what I want to discuss.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
First of all, Eric, Eric should second because he's on the fire department. I think that might be, you know, whatever, okay, yeah. And then the other thing is, the bylaws thing is, I pick who I want to replace me, and it's voted on by our membership, and then it's voted on by you guys. And it's, I'd like to have January 1st right in there if you could, because that's when he's actually going to take over. I wanted him in, go through the budget with me and stuff this year. I don't know if we can change that or not, because it's not a certified, but he technically won't be chief until January 1st. But I wanted him on board so that he could go through all the stuff this fall, the budget.
Okay, what we're going to do is, I do not believe we need a motion because it's not amending the motion as written, it's just adding the verbiage or change, you know, as to which you said that with the starting date, sworn in date of January 1st.
Okay.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All righty.
I'd like to introduce Patrick Arnt.
He's not officially chief.
I said captain.
Huh?
I said captain better.
Oh, well, then, okay, he's chief. Just wait till he has to the motion, chief, if you want. Too many chiefs around here. Madam Clark, would you read the motion to approve Patrick Arnt with the starting date?
Motion to accept Chief Lizer's recommendation of Patrick Arnt as new fire chief, the starting date of January 1st, 2018.
Is that okay? Okay, is there any further discussion? If no objection, I would, no, I can't. I just want to guess what I told the chief. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? I would like to be recorded on that voting most of the time. Any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations, Patrick. Okay, without objection, Chief Lizer, you're on.
Just like to introduce Patrick Arnt as another new, congratulations.
We might find our new chief a little quieter than our current chief. That is set with all the modern affection in the world, and Lizer, you know that. Okay. Till tomorrow, right? All righty. Do we, we have to prove your match?
No, I didn't.
Oh, we did. We did. Okay, thank you. All righty. Chairman Markson, you're back on with finance and human resources, please.
Thank you. We had a meeting on September 7th. We had Rick Kofka came and spoke. Rick is with the original Economic Growth Initiative, better known as Regi, and he spoke to us about a couple of different things. One was the YMCA relocation, also the $4,000, or excuse me, $4 million grant of money that is going to be approved for the Alexander Airport in the state budget. They're still waiting for the final on that. And he also discussed opportunities that Sand Valley has presented for this ranch area. Nekusa is moving forward with an economic development, and they are meeting, and they have asked that we have someone from the village attend there to treat your planning meetings. So that is to be decided. We're going to go ahead with that. I will make a motion to approve payment on the bills at this time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve payment on the bill. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I will also make a motion to approve the journal entries for the previous month. Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell to approve the journal entries for the previous month. All those in favor, signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
We had a representative from the Multi-Metro Deer Management present, and it was agreed that we would allow a $20 per deer harvest payment for this upcoming year. I would like to make a motion that we pay the Multi-Metro Deer Management $20 per deer harvested this season.
Motion by Chairman Markson to pay Multi-Metro Deer, referred to basically as MMD, $20 per animal harvested this season. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon. Discussion?
I think it's important to point out it hasn't ever, correct me, reached $200. And so we went per deer because it's easier for bookkeeping with them and their state diagram and stuff.
And the money goes to help process the deer. The deer venison is part of the food pantry, I believe. And also, there, Mr. Hobbs, who runs, who's run this program forever, basically doesn't drive us with all of his, there's a lot of paperwork involved in this. I did it for years for the village, and I only had to deal with 20 tags. I can only imagine what he goes through. And then the DNR pays us, it's a 50-50 grant, basically, we'll get half our money back from this state.
My question is, that's what we paid before, because I thought it was $200.
Correct. And so a couple of years, we're over that, but mostly we're under that, so Dan recommended it's a lot easier on his end, too. Okay, we have the motion, and we have the second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by a saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
We had a discussion that took place at our September 5th meeting and regarding the responsibilities of the vacancy for created in our village board, which was decided that we are going to be filling that position of a village administrator. The vacancy will be a short-term situation, and during the interim, the village plans to move forward. One item that we're going to take care of immediately would be employing Scott Harrington, Vanderwall and associate. He is very knowledgeable, has experience as an administrator, and he would probably be a good choice for us right now during this interim period. We expect that this should hopefully only last about three months. We'll know more as we get things going. So I would like to make a motion to employ Scott Harrington, Vanderwall Associates, as interim administrator, at $5,000 per. as interim administrator at $5,000 per month for three visits per month.
Okay, with Chairman Markenson's motion to hire employee Scott Harrington of Vanderwall Associates as interim administrator, $5,000 per month, that'll be based on, we'll get three visits for that. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell. Any trustees wish to speak on the matter? Eric.
So Vanderwall Associates, they were, my, an interesting question, because I don't know them. Were they in charge, were they in charge of DMI for the redevelopment?
They, if I understand correctly, if I'm wrong, were contracted by DMI, but that has since lapsed for three or four years.
Correct.
So we paid, then we paid some money a couple of years ago to Vanderwall for?
They were in our Tiff District.
Yep. And then they'll first post.
My concern is, they were hired to redevelop DMI, in, by DMI, and then you look at our DMI and it's still the way it is. So not saying that that's how he's going to run the operation, but he's a member of that company. The other thing is, they're out in Madison, right?
I believe so.
So if we have an issue, a hot issue or whatever, we're paying them $5,000 a month. Are they going to be here right away? Or how come we didn't look at local people or? Not local people, local companies.
What we did, we did a little investigating, and there, Scott is very familiar with the DMI project. He has been involved in that recently again, and there's going to be some news forthcoming shortly from them. And being that he has the background as an administrator, and he's also very familiar with our Tiff District because he helped write that, and he's also familiar with a lot of things that we're going through right now. And because we have a good relationship regarding the DMI, we thought it would be best bringing somebody in who is familiar with that, that we don't have to reprogram somebody in that area, because that is a very important situation for us right now, moving forward with the DMI project and the building and so on and so forth. Initially, when we talked with him, Scott had given us a quote, and it was a little higher than what we thought was acceptable. So our plan is that he would come three times during the month, and those three times, though, would be an all-day appointment, that he would be here. He'd be taking care of anything that's on the books. The first visit is actually scheduled for tomorrow, and he would be spending the entire day here, getting familiar with what's sitting on the desk, what has to be cleaned up, so to speak, and then moving forward with any projects. We do anticipate that he will be available for any phone calls or emails that have to take place maybe between the president or, you know, the board.
Is that going to be included in $5,000?
And he did indicate that he would, he'd look at things in between those meetings. We are not going to be calling him for every little item that comes up. It's $5,000, granted, that is, that is a lot of money. However, if we don't need him here for three times, then that will be renegotiated. He was open to that, but we do not want, it was spending really up to $5,000.
So is there anybody else that was interviewed or bid?
We did not, we did not open it up for bids. We felt that this was something we had to move an act to clear on, due to the fact that we are without an administrator at this time.
He also has a very detailed working knowledge of the detachment, and that started up, because at the time Vanderwall was still unemployed when that first started coming together, not long, but then he was out, he has working knowledge, the shoreline issues that have gone on over there, or no, that's more, I'm sorry. But anyway, another thing is, he's kind of like a one-stop sports shop, because if something comes up as to, you talk about an emergency, if Delmo has something where he needs a little engineering input, Scott as a principal would put that to one of their engineers down the line, so it's not going to cost us. In other words, it's going to be, by having everything under one house, it's going to save us some money. Now, to answer your direct question, if the ship hits the sand and Delmo has a major problem, sure, we'll probably build more if he's involved in big conversation with Mr. Harrington to make sure it's taken. My feeling on this was basically, we are plus with a good staff. I've talked in detail with Mr. Wiser about the clean water plant, and asked him already to start getting figures together to help us with the budget. I've talked to Diane, who is intimate with our budget, and we have, you know, our columnist, Mr. Chelton, is able to advise us, not do the work for us, of course, and then also Ben Markenson down with the sewage plant, very confident in his ability. With the staff and an interim administrator, we're going to be able to do well until we decide who the next administrator will be. I feel comfortable. And I think we would probably delay it, as Chairman Markenson said, if we would have taken time to go off. And so the amount of money we're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't really have to put a lot on bids either.
I might want to add also that, at this time, we're expecting that when he does come to town, he would be attending committee meetings also. The board meeting, you know, everything has been pretty much cut and dry once we get to this point, so it might be very important for him to come on days where he can spend the entire day in the office, catch up on things. Diane would have items ready for him, President Zirkul would as well, and then he would move on through his day and then be here in the evening for the committee, various committee So I feel that, you know, I realize, you know, $5,000 is not a small chunk of change here. And originally, he quoted me $7,000, and I said, you know, I said, we need to cut back on that. We don't know what the future holds for us right now until we do start the process of bringing in applicants and going through the process of interviews. But again, like I said, we're shooting for three months. I hope by January 1st, we have a new administrator.
Any other kind of discussion? Do we have a second? Okay. All righty, we had the motion and a second to employ Scott Harrington of Vanderwall Associates as interim administrator at a rate of $5,000 per month, based on three visits per month. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so we vote with this four and the one, Trustee Saylor and the nine. Okay, the next one.
We had some further conversation on moving forward with our permits, and we had decided that what we're going to do is, we're going to, I spoke with Laura Lee Furr, and she is with the Town of Saratoga, and she has agreed that she would take care of all of our permits, along with the commercial permits. These building permits would be done by her, but the labor, once after she gets in and has a conversation with our office staff, we feel that the office staff can take care of quite a bit of the paperwork, and she would just come in and actually write the permits and kind of sold off, so to speak. She is very familiar with this, she's been doing this for Town of Saratoga. She also has been helping us through this situation for the past year and a half as it stands. So we've got a good relationship with her. Inspections would still be done by the City of Wisconsin Rapids, she would not be handling that. She's very familiar with the shoreline situation on the other side of the river, so we feel that she can help us with that area as well. Her intent would be to come into the office two times a week, hopefully Tuesdays and Thursdays are the dates that we've set aside, and she would be coming in in the evening and working, and then she would be paid a rate of $50 per hour and plus 10% of all building permits. She felt very confident that she could work with our staff and hopefully keep those visits down to a minimum.
So it's your motion, Chairman?
My motion is to employ Laura Lee Furr to handle the building permits at $50 an hour plus 10% of the building permits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Theng. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Rick, when he was doing it, or the administrator, when he was doing it, was he doing the commercial and the private?
No.
Just the private?
Right.
Laura Lee was doing the commercial and the private?
Correct. And she, she basically teaches us, she's full-time building inspector for the whole village, for.
Okay.
And she's being, working same capacity with the Town of Saratoga. She was also instrumental in that, when the detached area, you know, that stuff began, so I think it'll be a little better. Any other discussion? Here is none. There's a motion and a second to employ Laura Lee Furr to handle the building permits at $50 per hour plus 10% of the building permit fees. Having heard the motion, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would also like to mention that moving forward, Finance and Human Resources Committee will select three candidates for the administrative position and then present them to the board for several, for second interviews. And Richard Downey, the administrator of the Village of Coney, whether, is going to be assisting us in the interview process and helping us through this situation.
Leave your shot.
He's the same one, he's our asking.
That's correct. Any conversation on questions regarding?
I got, I don't need to be a pain in the ass, or a pain in the butt. The, I appreciate the interview with the FHR and then coming to us, but that's kind of the, what got us into the police fiasco, because we had the Police Department interview their candidates, and then we just approved, because we just assumed that they did the due diligence, and they gave us the three candidates, and that's the three candidates that we hired. So by having the FHR committee do that, I would, I would rather see, and you might disagree with me, but I'd rather see all of us from the ground up be included in those interviews and that, and that process, the interview process, just because the knowledge, the decision that we have to make has to be based on knowledge that we learned in these individuals, not just, these are who I recommend, and then we put our name on somebody saying, yep, that's who we hired. Because I put my name on the police officer that was hired, because I took the recommendation from the Fire Department, from that committee, and over that, so that's where I would rather see us all.
All right, I'm not understanding, Eric, because we're, this, the Personnel Committee is just going to not recommend any one person, they're going to bring three people to the board without any bias, so.
That would be the second interview.
The second interview. I don't think at a first interview, you want seven people around the table interviewing all these people. I think it's much more effective to have a small interview committee. I've never been participated either on either side, either been on a team that's done seven all at once, or been in front of a team of seven all at once. I think we could be a very, much more effective interviewing and coming down with three. And we're not recommending one, two, or three, we're recommending, we'll bring three to the board, and that's the board's decision after that. So it's not as heavy slanted as, at least the way I understood you.
Well, another thing, too, if I may, the restructuring of the committees, when you bring the chairman of each committee that make up the FHR committee, you're bringing the input of all of them. I agree with you on the police officer hiring, but at the same token, when we went through the process a couple of years ago with seven people there, yes, you get the input, but you also get the confusion. I think if this doesn't work, we can certainly go back to it. But it's not like they're going to recommend one person. It's kind of like to do the homework with the professionals, you know, I mean, these actually have a lot of background in that. We have three names or whatever, whatever we decide we want to bring for a second interview, that's when all seven of us will be there. That's when we'll make our decision. But I think we're going to get bar down if we have 30 applicants. We should be so lucky.
We're not going to interview 30 applicants, sorry. You might get 30 applicants, but you're not going to interview 30 applicants.
Right.
You're going to interview a handful.
Right.
I'm hoping that Richard Downey is.
He hasn't returned my call yet. I called him yesterday, so it's way too bad. He was the guy that was with us the last time. Okay.
Moving forward, I'd like to make a motion to increase the village cashier/secretary position hourly wage by $1. Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon. Motion by the chair to increase the village cashier/secretary position hourly wage by $1. Is there discussion?
So is this because of the last incident? And that was the dollar that was deducted? Or this was just a dollar raise?
Yes.
It's due to the dollar that was deducted from the wage.
From before. Now, was there a timeline when that dollar go back? Was it 12 months? Or was there?
I'm not certain.
It was, it was.
Because Joe?
If I may respond to that, if memory serves me, it was from this point forward, but the committee was going to review the back to the time it was taken. So right now, you're approving, correct me if I'm wrong, and so it starts now.
Next figure.
And goes. But we have not, we're not abandoning the discussion on going back and discussing how far back we go or what other action we take. So this is not ending that discussion, it's just approving this one particular point.
The issue that I have is, just like growing up, if my parents told me that I was a ground with them, and then two days later, they said, well, I'm going to be a ground with them. Of course, I'm going to get in trouble again, because I'm not saying that about any person, but I'm saying I know what I would do as a person. Now, this is the second time that whatever was agreed upon in the past, and then now it's being changed. So what happens when you have an employee come and they get in trouble now, not in trouble, but something happens, and then financially, they get deducted a dollar, or they get a couple of days off or whatever, and now they start pointing a finger and saying, well, you did this for this person, you did this for this person. I just don't want to set the precedence.
Well, I think your discussion is premature until we get to that point. Right now, all we're saying tonight is, we're returning that employee. I can tell you.
The position.
The position, to perfect the position. I can tell you, if, if this was a union position, none of this would have happened. You know it, and I know it, because I've negotiated with unions. And so all we're doing right now is going forward from here. There will be more discussion guaranteed.
Anything else, sir? All righty, we had the motion and the second by Trustee Grundon to increase the village cashier/secretary position hourly wage by $1. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay, so that passed four ayes and one aye. Okay, minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes of the committee.
Second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, if nobody has anything for our department heads, you can go, we'll navigate through all the committees, okay? You'll have to talk with one or two partners. Keep up the tradition. All righty, Airport Commission.
Given the minutes, there doesn't seem to be anything that was substantially different from previous meetings. They did, however, decide to go ahead with the new garage door. Motion to, by the commissioner, to install the side-mounted garage door opener, to cost no more than $2,650. The insurance company authorized them to move ahead with the loss of bid. So that would be covered with the, by the insurance company at this. be covered with the, by the insurance company at this site. That meeting was August 3rd meeting, August 23rd, there was just more conversation on the fact that more fuel oil has been sold, and aircraft usage of the airport, and they had a motion to purchase the used laboratory cart from CWA for $2,250. Other than that, that's about it, so I would like to make a motion to approve minutes of the August 3rd and August 23rd committee dates.
Second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell, to approve the August 3rd and August 23rd, 2017 Airport Commission minutes, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Um, I have nothing, anybody, we don't have any unfinished business from our previous meeting, anybody have any new business?
One question on the previous minutes.
Yes.
Did we refine the minutes, the last minutes for the cert?
I've never got any.
Okay, no business, nothing, report from the clerk treasurer. He has nothing, okay, communications? I have no communications, I'm passing around the committee, uh, and board meeting calendar for next month, and I will go through that, we're going to have a special board meeting September 18th, um, at 6:00 PM, that will be held here, and that is a special meeting dealing with the DMI issues that we've asked you to be patient on. Uh, pardon?
Joe, give us one time, what was the time on that?
Uh, 6:00 PM, Marshall.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is that ready to close?
No, ma'am, I will tell you if it's closed. Uh, September 19th, cert, 5:00 PM Municipal Building, September 25th, Plan Commission, 5:00 PM here at Edwards Alexander Park, once again dealing with DMI issues, September 25th following, special board meeting at 6:00 PM here at Alexander Park, uh, then we'll have the PIT meeting on September 26th at the Municipal Building.
What's the September 25th meeting?
Pardon?
What is that, what's the topic?
To approve anything that may come out of Plan Commission.
Oh, sorry.
DMI.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, you want to say anything further in this time?
No, I don't have this time.
Uh, 26th is the PIT meeting, 5 o'clock Municipal Building, October 3rd, Public Safety, 5:00 PM Municipal Building, October 5th, Finance and Human Resources, 5:00 PM Municipal Building, and October 10th will be our village board meeting, 7:00 PM here at Edwards Alexander Park. Marshall, would you like to scott each other?
No, I'm going to have to be.
John, the other one's unconscious.
Okay, any comments on the committee calendar? We've already took care of the CDO, the YMCA, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, here.
That's right.
This is just a blind. Motion by Trustee Grundon, second by Trustee Markenson to adjourn, we stand adjourned.